Somebody's chewing on it.
I never got to.
Yes.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for your attendance tonight at the regular board meeting of the McHenry County Board of Health, June 17th, 2024, and it is 7:37. I called the meeting to order and asked that roll call be taken.
Mr. Markison?
Yes.
Dr. Amsler?
Yes.
Ms. Carmen? Ms. Altov?
Here.
Ms. Cathy? Ms. Marowski?
Yes.
Dr. McGuire?
Here.
Dr. Katz? Ms. Ortiz?
Here.
Ms. Clark?
Here.
Mr. Clark?
Here. We have eight members present, and therefore we have a forum, and the meeting can proceed. First item of business is approval of minutes from the May 2024 meeting. Our secretary is absent. Is there someone else that would like to move to approve those minutes?
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, the motion's been made by Mr. Altov or Mr. Markison, and seconded by Dr. Amsler. All those in favor of approving the minutes say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The minutes are approved. Next item on the agenda is employee recognition. We have two employees to recognize tonight for years of service. The first employee is, for 25 years of dedicated service, is Kathleen Cash.
Thank you so much. I'm so excited. I'll have to retire. I want my husband to get a picture. Let me say a couple words.
Oh, well, you're doing your picture, so you can pose and I can talk. Kathleen, who has lasted 25 years with the department, she was in the nursing division for over 20 years. She worked in a former program. We had family case management. She did a lot during emergency care during COVID. She worked the COVID clinics. She oversaw a lot of the administrative duties during the clinics. Make sure all the paperwork was, if you remember going through and having your paperwork checked, Kathleen did a lot of supervision of that. She also worked vision and hearing, and now we've had her in animal control for almost two.
Two?
Yeah. Feels like forever. Kathleen is the one who puts out those forever home pictures for you. She's the one who does all of our social media. She also coordinates all of our volunteers, and she is our adoption coordinator, so she is the jack of all trades. She has a lot to do in our organization. So, we really appreciate her being, moving over with us. And she actually just oversaw our first micro internship with District 155. We had a student come over to work with us, and that student's gonna start volunteering for the summer, so.
Who else? Are you having one? Who else is having their?
There are.
You're the only one present. Oh. Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
I wouldn't have missed it. Only took 25 years together. Thank you.
The next employee we'd like to recognize is Chloe Kavita, for five years of service.
Chloe, yes, she is in the nursing divisions. She's one of our epidemiologists. She started with us out of grad school as a health educator. And when COVID struck, we definitely needed some epi's right away. So she, we were able to move her into an epi position, and she's been in that position since then. Wonderful, great asset to the epi team. It was a great asset to the health educators in our division as well, so an excellent employee.
Well said. Thank you, Chloe, for your years of service, and congratulations. Give that back to you. Division and department updates. Ms. Adamson?
I'm gonna defer any comments. I think, I'm hoping that will be touched on in the committee.
Okay, very good. Director Noem?
Last month, I mentioned that we were having our first virtual office hours for our food establishments, so we did do that. We had about 175 people attend that. So, not sure if we'll be able to maintain that high level, but we really had good participation. And so, our next one coming up this month will be on pending changes to the FDA retail food code as we move into ordinance updates. And then just remind everybody, we have a full cyclone event this weekend. This one will be at, in Lake Inthe Hills, I believe it's at Chesapeake Elementary. That's it.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board? Nope, okay. Director Karas?
ER will be moving our PPE, the county PPE, again on Thursday. Hopefully, this is the final move. It is going into Nelson. They built our shelving for the pallets and everything, and it's all set up. So, we are moving that all on Thursday. The Operation Dropbox was a huge success, absolute huge success. We had 87 drop sites this year, and they collect over 8,200 pounds worth of supplies. And that's, I don't think counting everything, because we got some pallets from some different organizations that we did not put on the scale. So, it is a huge increase from last year of 5,400 pounds. There was a kind of a feel-good story too, I guess, the night that they picked up everything. They were able to provide some of those supplies immediately to a vet that was pretty provided housing that day. So, microwave coffee pots and other supplies to get that house set up for that individual was done that very same day from those supplies. That was a big deal. This year also, there was some monetary donations that valued about $1,230. There was $115 in cash donated and up to $1100 in gift cards to Walmart, other grocery stores and things like that, Uber cards. So, those were in addition to the supplies that they collected. A huge success, so thank you to everybody that participated, DOT, Veterans' Path to Hope, obviously, our MRC, and the, you know, all our staff at the Health Department. It was a big success and a big job, so thank you all.
Any questions or comments from the board?
No.
Wait, yes.
No, just.
Hey, I'm sorry. Director Howell?
Hey. I wish Kathleen had stayed, but she made a little flyer for you today that you could share with someone else. This is Bart and Brody. They have been with us for five months. Pam, I'm looking at you. Yeah, I'm getting there. I'm getting there. So, when they came in, they were both under 30 pounds, and they now are close to 75, 80 pounds. They're big boys, but they're very nice dogs. They just need the right person to come along and love them.
Oh, gosh.
And they, they are going together, right?
They don't have to go together.
Oh, okay. I thought they was one of the.
Some of these already pay their adoption fee.
Really?
So, that's kind of nice for some of them, but we just need to get some people in there, because like I said, they've been there for five months. And the longer you're in a shelter like ours, the more bad behaviors can happen, which they are actually doing much better, because we have been working very closely with them to try to find a more consistent behavior. A few other things. So, I was thinking while we were sitting here, that let's not forget that we did do the step system with our ACOs. So, we have the Animal Control Officer One, Animal Control Officer Two, Animal Control Officer Three. I have one who's moving to the ACO Two July 1st, and then I have one who's moving to the ACO Three July 1st. So, that's a very nice opportunity for them to gain some more functions, have some more independence, get some more training, and move up. So, I'm glad we were able to do that. And we only have one open position at this point. We have someone starting in two weeks, and then we have the position that's going to the County Board tomorrow. Hopefully, it gets passed, and we're able to post that by the end of the week. That's our office kennel position. So, I think that also will be a very nice position for someone, maybe a vet tech, maybe someone who's interested in working at kennel but has some administrative experience, because it doesn't pay so bad either. I think it was, I wanna say it was 17. Don't quote me. Sorry. I didn't write that down. We've been working on the renovation. We are working on a few tidy-ups of the ordinance, specifically around bites and rabies observations, so we'll be bringing some of that forward. Tomorrow, I have a meeting with the State's Attorney's Office to kind of look at a little bit of our language, look at how we are able to go to OV court for some of those things, and then kind of put that together a little bit. And then lastly, of course, we're working on budget. So, and that will be right around the corner.
Questions from the board?
How many bites have we had since the last meeting, about one month?
Since the last meeting?
Yeah, in the last month or so.
Oh, gosh, you know, I.
Just not to put you on the spot.
I'm gonna have to tell you, because I didn't get a chance to print out all the documents before the meeting, because it was down. Oh, it should actually be right on our.
Yeah, it should be in the.
It's now.
Okay, with any appendix.
Heck, it wasn't available earlier.
Oh.
So, now it's available. We have about 600 to 700 a year, so it tends to be, thank you. Patty pulled it up for me. Animal bite investigations for May was 82, so a little higher than last year. You know, we're still going through that time where the two, three, four-year-old dogs didn't get enough of the socialization, and I don't know, they're just maybe running a little rampant, maybe too reactionary. And we have a lot more dangerous dog investigations going on at this time than we've had in the past. So, we're trying to utilize that potentially dangerous dog when we can. We instituted that, what, two years ago? When we're able to know that the person is working on it, is dedicated to getting the dog what it needs before we go to the dangerous dog, because there's a lot more parameters on a dangerous dog than a potentially dangerous dog.
Anybody else? Thank you. Thank you, good report. Director Marin?
Thank you. Staff sent out a media release today regarding cooling centers and the county due to the extreme heat that's forecasted for the next several days. It is all updated. We've been working with the MA to make sure we all have the same information. As Mary Ellen mentioned, we are working with the architects and engineers on the design for the Crystal Lake facility. We made several more tweaks. We'll be meeting with them again to kind of get more updates. Succession planning continues. We're moving into phase two of our supervisor interviews and reviews of job descriptions. So, Gov HR will be here in July for two days to meet with supervisors and staff and do a training on succession planning and how you do it and why. They'll be here for two days, available for coaching sessions, counseling sessions, and any kind of questions any employees have. So, that's all I have.
Questions, comments? Okay. Thank you, Director Marin. Madam Prudits?
I just have a couple things. So, the FAR audit, I've now included in the packet. I had mentioned it last month, but I got it too late to have it in last month's packet. There are no findings. I included a copy of it. I wanted to let you know that there were some grant funds. It was just under $4,000 that we needed to return to IBCCP. These were for providers that we had paid, and they've been reimbursed by another funding source. So, they returned our money, and we returned the money to the state. Budget is on target, and then the grants will be ending this month, and then the new ones will be starting in July. So, we'll be revving them up this month and doing our kind of reporting. So, and then we're kicking off the budget season.
Wonderful. Questions, comments? Thank you. The next item of business, item six, committee updates. The Regulation, Ordinance, Promotion, and Planning Committee met since our last meeting, and also the Personnel Committee has met since the last meeting. On behalf of the Regulation, Ordinance, Promotion, and Planning Committee, Ms. Ortiz is gonna offer comments or a report. And regards to the Personnel Committee Chairman, Markison is going to offer a report. Ms. Ortiz?
Right, so we had new and unfinished business. I think it was, all of it was new, other than we had said that we would be looking at bylaws. But, first item that we looked at was food pantries. So, we did have two county board members join us. And we had shared that there were food pantries, smaller food pantries, that are established food pantries for the Board of Health, having to pay higher, or having to pay fees for their food permit, and kind of thinking that that amount wasn't too high, and trying to figure out other ways that they could continue to do food distribution, even though they're not a food pantry, without having those high fees. So, we had a discussion on that. One of the discussion items was that those fees go towards the inspections that are required for these sites to do distribution. And one of the changes that we did have in our, give me one second, in our ordinance, for, a revision that we did on our ordinance for for the health, for the Department of Health, was we added wording of the following. Let me find it. Again, this is smaller food distribution, or food pantries that are mostly working with Northern Illinois Food Bank, and they're not operating as full-time food pantries. So, we add in, gosh, am I gonna find that? The following. And then we said that we would open it up for a discussion.
Yes.
Okay, for that tonight, or do we actually not have that tonight?
No, because I'll go to. Can I jump in?
Yes.
Okay, so we actually, so it's suggested language that Lupe's referring to, to go into the next revision of the ordinances. So, we're not quite there, but we wanted to give the committee an idea of what we were thinking, because Patty and I had gone to Public Health and Community Services, and they had asked us, kind of back to what Lupe said, so Pam and Tracy Von Bergen, who is the Chair of Public Health and Community Services, it was on their agenda at the last Public Health and Community Services Committee meeting, and a request was made by the County Board Assembly to waive those fees. So, we have already waived the fees for food pantries at the lowest risk category for this year. The suggested language is a look forward and a suggestion for making that a permanent change. So, if you wanted to see the language, if you haven't been able to find it, it is in the packet that went to the Regulation, Ordinance, Planning, and Promotion Committee. So, when it is time for the whole ordinance, when we bring all of the suggested changes back, that will be the language, or maybe it may get tweaked a little bit, that will go, come before you then for approval.
And the food, or, and the language is food pantries means a public or a private nonprofit food establishment that distributes food at no cost to low-income and unemployed households, including food farm sources other than the Department of Agriculture and emergency, to relieve situations of emergency and stress. That was the suggestion that was made. And then, other items on the agenda was our open-air dining and outdoor bar policies. And that was that they realized that they allowed this for COVID, for businesses to have, you know, entities that are allowed to have open-door dining and outdoor bar policies, and they realized that, you know, there wasn't, their fear was that like insects were gonna be going in and all of these, and they realized through years after that it really hasn't been a problem, and they wanted to change that policy. So, it's fair across the board that, you know, that they've been allowing this, so applying that to the policies for open-air dining and outdoor bar. So, kind of changing the policies within that, so our policies align with what we have been allowing so far.
Through variants. So, in particular, we had a recent restaurant requested variants. So, because we granted it, then we wanted to look at the policy updated so that it would apply to all restaurants, assuming other people will ask for the same thing moving forward. We are also suggesting so that policy is modified, but will ultimately get incorporated into the ordinance as well. That is the goal. Patty, do you have anything to add on that? Okay.
In regards to the food pantry, one observation and comment I'd like to make is, on behalf of the food pantries, a couple of board, county board members presented the problem to the committee. The committee listened and took action that is favorable, and directed staff to draft a language that will address the issue in a favorable manner. And it's always a good thing to see that happened. Thank you. Personnel Committee?
Yep. So, we met last Tuesday, Personnel Committee did, that is. We discussed a number of different things. I think there was four things on the agenda. Number one, there is a position reclassification resolution that came before us, and we did recommend it to this full board for approval, and I believe that will be coming up later, so I'll reserve my remarks on that. We also discussed a position classification change within environmental health. Patty, you'll have to forgive me. I don't remember, I don't believe we took action on that. It was more of a back-and-forth discussion on it. Can you?
That's correct. So, we're still working with the Department of Human Resources to work through the classification changes that we're asking for, and then we're gonna bring it back.
Wonderful. That was what I was remembering, and I didn't have a note here that said I did anything on it, so, okay. And then there were two, the last two were in regards to our public health administrator. Just following up on that groundwork that Mr. Clark and previous Personnel Committee members had, you know, worked on over the last few years, trying to put in place more frequent evaluations for our public health administrator. So, number, the first one was the mid-year assessment. So, the Personnel Committee discussed it, and our, the final determination was that I, as the chairman of that committee, would engage with Ms. Adams and to provide her a mid-year assessment, and we're gathering questions and some feedback, and we're set to meet July 1st on that. So, and then, any questions on that? I kind of flew through the other two, but just giving you an update. Questions? Nope. And then, the last one's the, we discussed future employment contract for our public health administrator. And officially, she did submit a request to negotiate for her contract, which ends July, or, sorry, November 30th, correct? December 1st is the start of her new year.
Okay.
Slip of my wording there. But, so we're gonna be working on that, and then I'll have more for you later. Any questions on what we discussed in Personnel?
Thank you. Good report. Thank you. Next item is item seven, consent agenda. Any board members wish they have any items removed from the consent agenda? Since the balance of the consent agenda is financial, I will recognize Dr. Amsler.
Move to accept the consent agenda.
Second?
I'll second.
Dr. McGuire, seconds? As it is a monetary issue, I will ask for a roll call, please. Excuse me. The motion's been made by Dr. Amsler, is seconded by Dr. McGuire. Roll call, please.
Dr. Amsler?
Yes.
Dr. Amsler? Dr. McGuire?
Yes.
Mr. Markison?
Yes.
Ms. Altov?
Yes.
Ms. Marowski?
Yes.
Dr. Katz? Ms. Ortiz?
Here.
Oh, yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes. Item eight, new and unfinished business. A resolution to reclassify community health position. Recognize Mr. Markison?
Yes. As I mentioned before in Personnel, we did recommend to this board, and at this time, I would like to make a motion to approve the resolution to reclass community health position.
Anybody second?
I'll second.
Dr. Amsler will second. Is anybody from staff that wish to make comment?
We are restructuring after a lot of discussion with Susan in nursing. This is the change, the nursing division is already structured in such a way where community health is one side and clinical is the other. So, changing demands in community health deliverables, it also addresses some workforce needs and creates some additional pathways. It helps to balance workloads and hopefully retaining qualified and experienced staff.
Just so we're clear too for everybody, this is the initiation of a fifth division. That is.
Correct.
Community health. So, it's born out of nursing, and it will become its own division with its own divisional director.
Any questions or comments from the board? Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Markison, seconded by Dr. Amsler. Is, since it's a position classification, let's do a roll call vote on it, please.
Mr. Markison?
Yes.
Dr. Amsler?
Yes.
Ms. Altov?
Yes.
Ms. Marowski?
Yes.
Ms. Ortiz?
Yes.
Dr. McGuire?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes. The motion passes. Item B, resolution to award ARPA community health grants. Anybody from staff?
Yeah, I'll have Susan review what the process was, but just keep in mind, so these are dollars that were already earmarked for these community grants, but now, under Susan's leadership, they have identified and are recommending the following recipients of the funds.
So, the applications were, you know, put out through the website. We used electronic application process. And the projects had to address one of our health priority needs. So, we received 16 applications, and 13 are in front of you for approval for funding. The second phase, once we received the application, was to score them out based on benchmarks. There was eight things that we considered, such as a realistic budget, fiscal sustainability, and the fact that what were the return on what they were gonna be doing towards our health priority. So, there's a total of eight items that were scored out. If they were scored over 90, 90 or above, they were considered quality, or qualified application, and were then forwarded to Bronner for review. So, all 13 applications that are in front of you or requests for funding have been approved by Bronner. And now, we are bringing it, you know, for, this is the final stage to get those approved. And then, once they're approved, we will be initiating those contracts with these entities, and then setting the deliverables for them.
Did all 13 receive the total amount that they had asked for?
I, I believe so. I don't know that for certain, but yes.
That's great.
If not, it's very close to what they asked.
That's great.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Yeah, that's great. I apologize. I'm reading through them right now. I couldn't get access earlier, so.
Will a board member take a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve. I'll second.
A motion has been made by Ms. Marowski, seconded by Dr. Amsler, to approve the. to approve the resolution to award ARPA community health grants. This is a lot of substantial money, so let's do a roll call again.
Ms. Marowski?
Yes.
Dr. Amsler?
Yes.
Ms. Altough?
Yes.
Dr. McGuire?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Ortiz?
I abstain.
And Mr. Markerson?
Yes.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, Susan, how, how much more time is it going to take you, your staff, to kind of review the administration of those grants, just out of curiosity? How much, you mean when will we get the money in their hands?
Well, when will you get the money and then obviously, there's gotta be some reporting requirement back to. So I'm just asking, time-wise, what's that going to do to you or the people who will be actually overseeing and responsible for that?
Yeah, that's, that is another reason for, we're, we're trying to.
We're laughing at each other. By the way, no one paid me to do this, it was just.
You know, that was part of our discussion with the split, as far as, you know, Megan Hack will now be overseeing this.
Okay.
This project, of course, I'll be there to assist in any way I can.
But maybe it'll be on the front lines.
The county, yes, yes. The county is going to assist us quite a bit with this, the county finance. So they'll be, we just need to let them know that, yes, go ahead and issue the check. How often that happens, we need to, you know, finalize that. But we're gonna set up deliverables that each, you know, entity will need to report back to us and if they've met, they're meeting their deliverables and the goals, then they'll be getting their check and what they're spending their money on, they'll report what their budget is.
Can we just get periodically kind of a report?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. And just, I'm gonna throw something out there, so this is a lot of additional responsibility. And as we were talking through the, the restructure, on our internal org chart, we have some blanks, right? We have open spaces that don't actually exist to recognize this work, this additional work, to execute this, there is no additional staff to support this. That means coming back to the county to ask for that. So it's not that we won't do that, but that's where we're starting. We don't have any dedicated staff, other than Megan, to administer this, but we do have support, as Susan said, from the county. So just keep that in mind in case that is something that comes up in the future.
Yes.
Because it may, because these are gonna be, by the time they're executed, two and a half years, they'll go through the end of 2026.
Take a long on your question or concern. I'm just, now I've read through them very quickly. And a lot of them, some of them are for single deliver, you know, a van or some equipment or something like that. Some of them are more long-term programs, I think I even saw a two-year program in there. But on that topic of making sure that the money is, goes to the place that we want it to go and it continues functioning in the way that's intended, is there some kind of clawback mechanism in the case of something like a vehicle or some piece of equipment that we're gonna purchase? If it doesn't end up getting used, is there a way to somehow get that back? Or utilize it in another way?
That's a really good question and I think we're gonna, we did have that discussion as far as if somebody fails to meet their deliverables, but that's all part of the contract that we're working with finance, you know, they haven't established with their monies that they gave out from ARPA. We're kind of piggybacking on that contract and we'll be resurrecting that contract and tweaking it for our needs. But that is, you know, a question that's come up that we'll make sure that there's corrective action if they don't follow through or they're not delivering on what they need to be doing.
It's federal dollars, so there's gotta be some.
Right, and this isn't me saying, oh my gosh, this is, you know, there's not enough oversight. I realize that it's federal dollars and I know from that time period that money is, was going out and I'm, I'm just glad that we're looking at it. And I know, and I recognize, a lot of the partners out here are partners.
As Pam said, it's part, it is a federal dollar, so there's, there's strict oversight that is required to make sure, but yes, it, it's, it's in the contract for how we measure those and set those deliverables up for each of those entities to make sure is gonna be unique for each one. And it'll be an addendum to that contract.
Okay, and just flipping through them, I recognize all of the names, so I know these are partner, these are not, I'm just, some guy who showed up in a van and he's like, hey.
I wanna give me some good people rides.
Yeah, so thank you, thank you. It looks great, congratulations, nice, nice work, I know it was a lot of work.
Shout out to Megan Schuler, that has just put a lot of work into this.
So this is all gonna be under community health?
Correct, yes.
Because it aligns with the map, which is our community health assessment and improvement plan component, which also falls under.
Voting complete.
Mr. Clark?
Yes. The uh, oh, uh, majority voted in favor, motion passes. Next item is AC bylaws. Regards to bylaws changes, just so board members are aware, it requires a two-third vote in favor. It's not a simple majority. We are asking for a change to Article 3, Paragraph F of our bylaws. I will defer to Ms. Ortiz, as she was on the committee and reviewed it.
Let me open that, so we had, had a discussion, I don't have it open, but Article, Article 3, Section F talks about how board members cannot be compensated for being on the board on, or reimbursed expenses. I think it was gonna be brought up to the board. Where Mr. Clark had mentioned, you know, how do we, we've had vacant seats as a board, on the board, how do we increase retention? It was a good discussion on that and, you know, could possibly um, a month, uh, a monthly reimbursement to board members, if it appropriate? Because reimbursing people for expenses would be difficult with mileage and everything and so would um, changing the wording, wording in our, in our bylaws where it would allow for reimbursement, some type of reimbursement was suggested to bring to the board. And we, we had a good discussion of how we could kind of, it's been a trending topic, I guess, how we can encourage retention and how we can get, motivate people to continue to be on the board without having that be the only thing that they look at. And Mr. Clark, if you wanted to talk about how we can exceed a certain amount and whatnot, but bringing it to the board and changing that in our bylaws.
The, if I may, the original language, first of all, this was one of the goals that was set for, for Administrator Adamson to work on in an effort to try to improve retention of board members. And when we reviewed the bylaws, the language that was asked, now exists in Paragraph F comes right out of the state statute that creates boards of health in the various counties in the state of Illinois. But that was created, that language in our bylaws was created many, many years ago. The state law has since been amended, authorizing the county government to consider financial compensation and reimbursement of expenses for board members. Again, for the purpose of keeping people around and, and saying, thank you for your service. So we presented it to the county staff and, who then has had dialogue with the county board and as Ms. Ortiz said, the county staff does not want to get involved. You traveled five miles, you traveled 22 miles, your phone bill was this, your computer bill was that. So they have elected to have conversation at the board, county board level as far as creating a set compensation rate. A stipend, and so for them to do that, we have to amend our bylaws. By doing so, the county board and county administration will review the topic, they will set the rate and they will put it in the, in the budget for next year. None of this is gonna happen until after December 1st. So that's why it's here in front of us, so we can amend the bylaws, authorize the county administration and county board to consider the topic. So are you moving to approve?
Yes, I am, I am moving to approve the amendment on the bylaws. Do we need to be specific in?
Uh, Article 3.
Bylaws or Article 3, Section F.
Second?
I'll second it.
I have.
Cam, yeah, please, please.
I am, I know we've discussed this previously. I will say, I am really uncertain how I feel about being compensated for this position and I have just had the experience of being on other boards where I was a volunteer and when they became compensated, though it was not in a monetary perspective, it was a promotional opportunity. What we saw was the people that got on the boards in those cases were no longer doing it for the right reasons, in my opinion. They were there to get a checkmark next to their name and then move on. Obviously, ongoing compensation is a totally different scheme than what I was talking about, but it had left me with that very disappointing taste in my mouth. And I do this because, not because I'm expecting compensation, but because I wanna serve. And I don't know what kind of compensation would make someone want to do this with their life and what in that time.
Well said.
I don't, because you either do it for the, you know, what are you gonna?
The, the state statute sets maximums and at, and I'm fairly confident that the county board will come in under those maximums, even at the maximums. Even at the maximums, it's not a whole lot of money.
I'm, at this point, I will say, when it comes to vote, I will vote for it in the sense of it will match state law, it will open doors for things, but I will be very hesitant or with my one vote, whatever that compensation may look like. So I, I don't know, I just throw it out there, I'm curious of your perspectives on it.
I'm curious as to what, what, what kind of promotion people would get from being on the board?
Not from this one, but I'm just.
Yeah, but I mean, in general.
To get promoted in the fire department to lieutenant, you, you can get points for serving in these different categories.
Can I be a lieutenant?
As far as, as far as I care, oh boy.
You got a white shirt.
Would this not be considered a volunteer position then? Because there's a, some sort of compulsory assignment, okay.
Then you have to get a W or a ten.
That's what I'm saying, like.
You would, you would, you would have to report the income.
Report the income.
But I, I'm gonna guess it's not gonna meet the 600.
Right, exactly, but.
Just saying.
But no, I like, I like that this is one of my volunteer opportunities, I just wanna make sure that I can classify that.
It would, yes.
Can you refuse it?
Well, that's a good question.
You can, it's still a volunteer position, it's not a paid position. It's a stipend for your expenses, completely different.
I mean, I would recommend you not take the action until you see what the board does, administration does. This is just a step to authorize them to consider the topic.
To offer.
Understood.
If it makes you feel better, I'm gonna vote yes for this, but I'm kind of sort of where you are. But the bylaws should be amended for the discussion.
Right, well, I don't, and I don't, because I don't still wanna shoot it down for my colleagues here who have put effort into it and they're recommending it, but I.
The, the conversation did take place that what we didn't wanna see was that somebody get on the board because of this monetary value and then just stay on the board because, you know, to collect the money. The money's not great, yeah, great enough for a person to do that.
Is this when I should talk, after we do this?
At any time.
About the board?
Sure.
No, I'll wait till after we take action.
Okay.
And just to go back on, you know, I would like to hear what have they're standing on this at the committee level, I think we had talked about why we really do it and it was really, and it was really like, we would like to see other things that we think that would help with retention and, and like seeing the impact that we actually are doing. So we talked a little bit about that and there's committee members that are not present that felt the same way that we are. Again, for this purpose, we prefer and that there's no amount yet, but that there's other ways to, to increase retention.
I probably didn't even need to make mention of it because I know the hearts of the people that serve here with me, with us, and I know that that's not, you're not looking to do it for those reasons. So I, I'm not, I didn't mean by my words to suggest that, that committee, your committee had been seeking this for financial gain.
No, I think that's a valid point that you brought up because people can, people can use this. I mean, for example, if I were still in, in the business, I could say, well, I'm on the board of health and, you know, I mean, use this as a, a step in whatever, polishing my resume.
Oh, I couldn't use this for the fire department, I'm saying committee, onto the fire department.
Right, 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 but I need to understand what you're saying. And then just be a non-participant, just show up at the meetings and.
Service on any board, it is included on many resumes as people are applying for.
Depends on your level of.
Jobs or promotion.
Yeah, that's how my time's even soon.
Any other questions or comments? We have a, a motion made by Ms. Ortiz, seconded by Ms. Clark. As this is an amendment to the bylaws, I ask for a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Ortiz?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Marowski?
Yes.
Dr. McGuire?
Yes.
Dr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Markerson?
Yes.
Ms. Altough?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes. We've met the two-thirds majority, so therefore the motion passes. Board member comments, item nine, Ms. Altough.
I didn't know where, I didn't know when to say it. I, I just want, and it actually, it goes, it's relevant to the conversation we just had. I want all of you to understand that there was much discussion at the public health committee. We actually get a huge amount of individuals interested in volunteering and serving. Didn't happen several years ago, it's now increasing. I believe it's because many of us are actually going out and begging people to, to come in and stay. So I wanted to be abundantly clear that you should not assume that if you've served, that you will be reappointed because we have a huge amount of interest. And so each interview will be taken on its face. I think in the past, it was always kind of assumed, if you came back, you'd be reappointed. I don't want you to do that, new board, new ideas. In addition to that too, there will be a huge attempt on this board to have a little bit more diversity. A lot of conversations about the fact that we have nobody from the restaurant industry, we have nobody from environmental health. So it's just one of those things that they're gonna look to balance the board a little bit more to reflect what our services are that we provide in the county. So, thank you, I, I just wanted you all to understand that. I personally think that the chairman has made an attempt to allow people to serve at least two terms. If they're coming, your attendance is good and they're getting positive recommendations, but I just wanted you all to know that there was a lot of conversation that we're encouraging people to get engaged and volunteer and, and they are coming and doing that.
It's a great problem to have.
It is, we say that every single time. We're just amazed and, and then they show up, which is even better. They don't just come and interview and then never, we never see them again. They actually show up and are very much engaged, so.
Too many firefighters on this board.
I, and, and again, going, going back to, to retention, just adding on to that, I think that the Personnel Committee might wanna have a significant conversation about lobbying to change the state statute with regard to a dentist. I don't know what we'd offer. I don't know what we'd offer, but in just talking to some other counties, that is not an uncommon problem. So I'm wondering if we don't want to have a conversation to see if there's not one of our legislators or someone in the field that would propose something new. Either you can have either this or this, you know, or it may be represented. But I'm just indicating it's not an unusual problem and it might be something we want to get engaged in.
Are you proposing with that to remove the requirement to have a dentist? Or to somehow encourage?
I'm proposing we have a conversation about it. I have no particular, but it's a common problem that people are having in fulfilling that specific slot. So I'm thinking maybe eliminating or saying a dentist or a something instead of being real specific, I don't know.
When I was first appointed to this committee, we had three dentists on this board. But we also had a dental clinic.
We had our own clinic.
That was part of the Department of Health. And that service was transferred to other agencies. And in the following years, you saw the dentists lose interest in serving on the board because we don't deal with their topic or their expertise often. And since I, since that message came up or that, since we're discussing this, we have doctors on the board. They are here to give us information, advice on a topic that they're familiar with. But that's not the only thing that a doctor or a nurse or firefighter has input on. They have a duty and an obligation to be familiar with every topic and every issue that comes before this board. Because you're representing, you're not only representing your industry, you're representing all the taxpayers in the county, all the citizens in the county. And so I raise that because we are having difficulty finding a dentist.
We could, I'm sorry.
And if we do get a dentist, it's not just because we want to have them voting on dental issues. Or, you know, they are voting and participating in every issue that comes before this board.
And that too, the statute's old. So and you could just say in the dental field, it could be a hygienist, it could be a dentist, it could be a racist guy, I don't know what racist guy. Or it could even be, we have many clinics now that provide seniors dental care. It could be, so I'm just thinking, there's enough opportunity, but I think, you know, it would be a good issue maybe for this board to get engaged in and draw some attention at the state level, then they should consider changing it.
I've been here for a few years and I feel, have you received feedback or any insight as to why we don't really have representation from the restaurant industry?
We've had.
Well, we have had in the past. But I feel like it, just the few years I've been here, it's been very sparing or very fleeting. So I think that... Have you understood why or is it just coincidence since I've been here?
We actually had an applicant this last time.
Oh, okay.
And it was a decision of the committee as well as supported by the chairman to allow the two applicants who already serve on the board to continue to serve because there were lots of things going on.
I see.
They thought that was, but we have, and I will also tell you, there's been a resurgence in the county of a restaurant association, which had kind of sort of tanked during COVID. They lost people too.
Sure.
That's being resurrected by some people. So I think that that might show more interest as well. So we'll see.
My concern with that and the thought that came up as Joe spoke about, you know, everyone having an obligation to cover all that area is that sometimes when someone comes in and they're representing, they feel like they're representing one group. Like if you're the only dentist on this board, then by gosh, you're going to be involved in any conversations about dental stuff. But then on the rest of the time, you're not really going to get involved. And what I don't want to see is, restaurant in particular, my experience, though this is anecdotal, was that if that is your area and you only show up when those topics come up, then that is a problem.
And I would look at everybody and say, and that's administration and that's orientation and that's the ability, pick up the phone and say, you know, you have a bigger obligation. That's management, that's, yeah. That's a whole different topic.
Agreed, I'm just putting it out there.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Or maybe, you know, I don't know if this board ever exercised a removal clause. I've never been...
There is a clause in the bylaws for, you know...
I'm asking.
Not during my term, no.
I've never...
This was an example that I gave at the Personnel Committee. Person gets the opportunity to sit on the board. And it's like, ooh, I can have my opinion about public health count. I can, I guess, I go, oh, great, I'll join, sign me up. And then we get here and yes, some little bit of our individual input goes into the board, into the department. But the majority of our workload is dealing with dogs and cats and septic systems and vaccination shots and all kinds of bureaucratic, very necessary functions, but it's not, it's not, oh, I'm not having any effect on public health. It's, we are an organization that reviews and approves what our staff does. And that occupies so much of our time. And I have watched numerous board members, they get tired of that. You know, a restaurant board member is a perfect example. I think I'm going to be able to get less inspections or get more seating capacity or whatever, whatever the issue. And then when that doesn't develop and no opportunity to develop, they lose interest. And if, okay, I'm spending all this money on gas, I got to get dressed up, I got to have, you know, I got to review my email, I got to do all of this stuff. And so that's why the goal was put in to try to do some reimbursement to...
Motivate.
Can I also, can I also, that's why you have liaisons. That's why there's board liaisons on all the boards and all the commissions and all the little things that are outside, but that the board appoints people to. That's partially the board's job. During the interview, when they're making a recommendation for service on any one of these commissions, boards, is to then evaluate. And if you don't think that we don't sit and go, you know that Altough? She hasn't attended a single meeting and it's been a year. We do do that. So there is a checks and balance that comes on a, you know, bigger umbrella level too. And that is, and also it's an educational opportunity. We need to educate the public about what actually you do do here, your responsibility and the policy that's set here. And if they don't like it, that's fine. But we need to educate the public that we do bigger, broader things. So it's kind of a twofold opportunity.
I'm excited for this.
I'm ecstatic that we have again as many volunteers that are, and it's not just here. It's across the board on all of our commissions and committees. We usually always have at least two or three people from one position. So it's great, makes it very difficult for us sometimes, which it is. Um, I, maybe because more people are out there talking about how much fun it is to spend Monday nights here? I don't know. I don't know, there just, there seems to be again more, maybe because we have an older population. I will tell you that most of the people who do come in to interview are retirees or people who have relocated and have had some experience. We don't get a lot of the young people, which is trying very hard to...
Well, it's difficult.
Yeah, it is, they've got families, yeah.
We're fortunate here that this board usually is bureaucratic review because our staff does such a great job.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if we, if we get bored, can you imagine how bored they are?
Yeah. They're like, would you stop talking about yourselves? It's Monday night, we're going home.
Oh, and they've been here three Mondays consecutive.
Yep.
Sorry.
Any more comments from board members on any item? Next item on the agenda is number 10, Information Communications. And on there is the findings from the audit to be reviewed. Any questions from board members? Okay, we do need to go into executive session for reviewing executive session minutes. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So...
I'll second it.
Motion has been made by Ms. Altough, seconded by Mr. Markson. All those in favor of entering executive session, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Guys have it, we are in executive session.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Good night.